Yep. Dirty water.
Didn't have this many leaks when we had an old roof.
Yeah, well, I'm telling you, it was one heck of a mess.
We will be starting in two minutes.
Brian, bring up a couple of those. Is that the corrected one, Brittany?
It just has the word new business, because Dan said.
Use? We, she should be en route, we called to confirm, so.
Uh, Treasurer Bud.
Here.
We have a call on.
Thank you. Next item is executive summary, we're just here for a closed session. Next item is adoption of the agenda, and does this have to be revised, did I hear?
We just added new business.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Oh, it hasn't been revised, I got new business online.
Well, it's just there's no, there's no actual new business, it's just.
Right.
So.
Well, it don't have to be revised, there's a motion to accept the agenda there.
Motion to accept the agenda.
So moved to accept the agenda.
Boynton and Kelly, I have a motion by trustee Boynton, supported by trustee Kelly. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, next item is closed session. The township board will, would like to go into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight H to discuss the contents of an attorney-client privileged communication, can I get a motion?
Through the chair.
Trustee Kelly.
To put the board into closed session pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight H.
Step forward.
I have a motion by trustee Kelly, supported by Treasurer Bud, hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes, we are going into closed session, uh, thank you, we'll be back.
Um, just can't, actually I need to sign out, I'm signing up for Live Barn, can I turn my subscription off a little bit? No, we travel, so that's like our home rank, but we play like, I mean, it's a travel team, but we don't really travel super far. The farthest we've gone this year is Cleveland, Pittsburgh, like otherwise like, yeah, I would just say that, I mean, that's normal. He does like, in our Chelsea, like Brighton. He's a really bad goalie, he's like, he's so bad at it right now. Yeah, that's, so, right now, um, because they have two solid goalies, like they charge them the same amount as ever, but I like follow these groups and they're begging for going higher. No ice creams ever, so as he gets older, like it'll get cheaper.
Like, none of the, none of the hockey teams I've ever played on, like as an adult, have ever charged any of the goalies, just cause.
Cause their stock's so expensive and cause. His coach last night actually reminded me to join Live Barn again, was playing like an old man game, and he went at the, you know, like at the goalie, like he was heading in and then he like, like stopped and like, you know?
Yeah.
Turned fast, snapped his, remember the thicker bonus, and thought it was like, and like, I saw his like fiancé show me in Live Barn, it doesn't look like anything, so he did like kind of a hockey stop, but not really, he just like went and instructions, and then he goes down, and then he goes to stand back up, and he just like can't, so like he didn't even know until he went to stand up and his leg just collapsed, yeah.
That's awful. I've seen, uh, I've seen, uh, I've seen so many people get hurt at fucking beer league hockey games, like, I, twice, twice, cause I've, I've been playing like sort of regularly for the last like eight years, twice in the eight years I've been in a game where we've had to call an ambulance to get somebody off the ice, that's also people do dumb stuff too, like.
I played roller hockey.
Some of the things I play on are dumb too, cause like, like, when I played adult hockey out of Ann Arbor, they were like zero tolerance league, right? Like, if you even thought about getting into a fistfight with anybody in the middle of an ice hockey game, they'd kick you out of the league. But I've been playing leagues down river, it's like, okay, get a game suspension.
They play down river teams, they're the ones that are just like screaming, and they have cowbells, and they jam on the raps, and then we played like, we played Birmingham, and it was quiet, it was just like, they were chit chatting. We had a college, LaFolias program, it's out of control too, we had a college game against LaFolias, and it was seven, because the coaches were encouraging the kids to like throw our kids to the ground, like, and stuff like that, yeah, at seven, it was a mighty game. And two kids were crying off on the side, and the coach is like, I'm done, we're done, like goodbye.
I, I get, there's, there's a time and a place to teach kids how to play the physical element of the game, but like, like when they're young like that, and especially even the parents, like, you don't. Inch difference in the league that I played in, it was fourteen to eighteen, and it was. Like, I, I remember one of the guys that played on our team, like, was barely started puberty, you know, he's like four foot nine, and a couple guys I played with who were like, you know, like, two hundred and seventy pounds.
That happens in middle school, all the sports, but my son played, my oldest plays lacrosse, and he, so like, he's very, he's just hit by a beat, and he's super excited, he's fourteen now.
Oh, I'm sure.
But, that, it scares me because they can get hurt so bad.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, that year he had. I, um, two, the two hand breaks were just taking hard shots, like just stick check from like a bigger kid, and then the ACL was, he was just changing directions to get away from a kid trying to kill him, and he tore it.
That was, that was one of the things that's like, it, cause it's kind of changed, and some of the other sports are different, cause I don't, I don't know all the lacrosse is, but I know like, like in hockey, we used to kind of, I don't know, it sounds weird, but like, you know, there was kind of like an unspoken thing, like you didn't target the younger players, because there was a mix, right? So like, like, so we knew, like, if the younger players got targeted, or one of the older kids went to target one, like, we'd go handle it, you know? But you can't do that anymore.
Like, specifically to lacrosse, but I just heard it, is it, they teach either skill, or they just teach. Have contacts local teams that you have some passing skills?
Yeah, no, that does kind of suck, cause. Yeah. I try, I really tried to get her in hockey, but she never showed any interest in it, so we've been having her play like AYSO soccer, and it's like, it's not that bad, there's been a couple, like, there's a couple teams and a couple other things, where it's kind of like, you know, that's not really cool, but nothing like that. But, yeah, no, I, I've seen some of the hockey parents, I know like my buddy used to coach a youth league, where it's just, it's out of hand.
You have your littleest boy, though, it is fun, it's probably my favorite sport, actually, it's fun.
Oh, I, I, well, that was the thing, also, I was trying to get my oldest one in, cause it's, it's like a sport that I actually know, like, like, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, and we're down river, do they have that bell tire girls?
All the women's hockey teams, yeah.
We have a girl in thirteen months, so she's.
Some of those are really, really, really good. I, I used to, so, on the, one of the beer league teams I used to play on, this one guy I used to play with, his sister was like a college hockey player, like a step below, like she almost made the US Olympic team, and so she'd come out and play beer league with us, and it was funny watching her, cause you'd have all these guys, like, and she'd just skate circles around all of them, she's like, and she'd be sitting there, she's like, none of them are that good.
That's, that's so cool.
Dominate it, it was fun.
Now, maybe as you see all my girls in that, because I think like they're just smarter, so. We have a girl goalie, our, Roland's like goalie partner is a girl, and she's way better than him, like, I can't be mad about that.
Yeah. Oh, so she's got athletic.
She's been stuck in net against her wills, and she was boring.
Well, anytime it's like, you know, you get somebody who has like a professional athlete, is like a, or a professional athlete or a coach or something like that, is like a mentor or whatever, like, you know, they kind of, there's some stuff that's the same, right? Like, they know how to position, they learn like what's important and what to teach, and like the rest of us, we're like, okay, you know, go out there and have fun.
I think it's like a mental thing, or a coach, that's not. But I'm sure, how are you like, build him up, cause it's mentally tough, like, I don't know how to do that, and I'm sure he is good at that with her, cause she's super unfazed, like she'll get smoked, and then she'll come off and she'll be like, can I get nachos now? Like, doesn't even care, I love it.
That's awesome, it's a good mentality to have. A couple bad shots, a couple bad things he was playing, like, shit, he just gets so fucking pissed.
Goes east, he's like a very, he's just an emotional human, so his are either similar, like he comes off the ice and he's like, planets are there, like, I'll be like, he's just so good, buddy, and be like, there are nine planets, or, like, and I'm like, what? Or he'll get off the ice, like, and he's like, hey, man, they pulled me in, or like, guys, you know, it's hard to, luckily, it's, like, he's.
Daughter was, uh, playing soccer games.
Soccer, all three of my boys played soccer, those were their first sports, and all three of them would cry so much, like, does that sport make my kids cry anymore? I mean, how is that a sport? I don't know.
I, my daughter does it, like, she plays it, but she doesn't like care, she just kind of like, she doesn't even like play that hard, she just kind of runs out there, and it's more, it's just getting her physically active to herself. She like, she's, the only time she ever gets mad is when she does something stupid, like she ran down and she picked up the ball, like not thinking, you know? Yeah. That's what we, we had to have, cause my, my daughter turned, she turns nine this month, and like, it's a cutoff date, cause for AYSO, they had like, it was like seven and eight year olds in one league, and then it was like nine, ten, eleven year olds, in a different league, and so they wanted to move my daughter up, cause they didn't have enough players, and so we had to like send nasty emails, be like, no, 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 she's moved down, cause she's still learning the game.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't want her, that's, that's what I told her coach, I'm like, I really just don't want her to get discouraged and quit playing, like, I know there's gonna come a day where she's like, I don't want to do any of this anymore, and I hope that day is years and years from now, as opposed to.
We got talked into this, because there aren't a lot of goalies, Ronan is. One year, and he was only a full-time goalie for two months, before he decided he liked it, cause he's got an age to rotate all the kids. To the tournament, his coach came and picked him up for our house, because he's like, you know, we're in the second goalie, we think we can teach him, like, he likes to do it, we like it, like, and I was like, okay.
Hello.
Hi, when is Dan leaving?
Uh, the nineteenth, so in like ten days.
Are you gonna have to do everything till you get the new guy in?
Yeah. I'm not gonna have to do everything, but I'm gonna be filming, and there's a lot of stuff she's telling me to get somebody else.
I remember you left because you needed more time with your family, and that's why he's leaving you, but now you still have a family.
I have a little bit more help to.
Than you did before.
Than I did before with, with some of the.
At the time when you left, I have quoted, I looked up the stories that I wrote about it, and Kevin is quoted as saying, when you work for me, it's twenty-four seven.
It, it, it was a lot busy, actually, you know, to be honest, now, now everything's a lot more relaxed, and everything's a lot more stable, and yes, thank you.
I pushed for the, I started the whole morning work thing, it's my doing.
Okay.
I mean, selfishly, because I also have kids.
Yeah, sure.
These things easier.
Well, it does, it definitely does, being able to walk to my sweet kids' school on Fridays is nice, but, but no, it's, it's a lot more, everything's toned down a lot over the last.
I think cause the board is like, the board is less volatile, and so I think, especially the culture of like, just the entire building, cause the board gets a lot.
Okay, so nineteenth, you said, eighteenth, nineteenth?
Yep, nineteenth, nineteenth, he's, he's kind of, yeah, so he's, he's kind of working for both us right now, so he's working for us part-time, and he's working for, uh, Beckett Raider part-time, so yeah, I know, he's.
He gets so tense, you, yeah, I mean.
He's, he's, he's so good at what he does, though, you know?
He is, he is exceptional.
When he offered it, when he offered to stay on as long as he has, to do that, I was like, I, Dan, I really, really appreciate it, are you sure you want to do that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, Dan's a, he's a, he's one of the good ones.
Yeah, he does, he does all his eyes are crosses, his teeth, and then he sends you more information than you ever want in your life. But it's good backup.
That's right.
Ever a lawsuit?
Well, it's very, he's very thorough, and you know, he makes sure everything's done correctly, and he's, he's really, really good at what he does, and he gets us a lot of work done too.
Cause he never stops, he never stops.
I know, on weekends I tell him, Dan, stop sending me stuff, go play with your kids.
I know when he had like one of the babies, he was emailing like three, four AM because he was up, and people were like, damn, so he started to change the time, so the emails would go out later, so people would stop giving him.
So you get a bunch of eight AM emails.
People would talk, give him like, black fur.
Hours like that, but, but yeah, so he's, we got him for about ten days or so, so.
Yeah, I wonder, cause I did mail someone.
We're both gonna be at the next, the wedding tomorrow night, so both of us.
All these gas stations.
There are a lot of gas stations, but, you know, they, uh, that's, that's what the area is owned for. That's something else to think about too, and I don't think, you know, we would have a lot, you know, of these gas stations at one corner, but, you know, there's own for it.
Right, what do you do, you can't tell them, no, you can't.
No, you can't.
Well, you can, but.
You could, but it'd be expensive and messy, and.
Yeah.
Odds are, they'd probably get to build it anyway, and we just have spent a lot of money on a lawsuit, so.
Yeah, I hope they don't spend a lot of money on it.
Yeah. How are you doing?
How old is your youngest?
She is two and a half, two, yeah, so she'll be three in January.
January, so her, her oldest calls her evil, and I just, I think of that all the time.
Evil one. That, that's how, that's how the youngest kids are, that's how my second born, like, they say second born kids are rough, but mine is just, oh my god, she's mean.
It's rough, but I think the third is just evil.
She, we went to the Renaissance Festival this weekend, we took the kids, and we're sitting there watching a show, and my daughter playfully bit me in the nose at the show, and I was like, what do you, what do you do about that? She thought it was funny, and I'm like, no, you can't bite.
And it like hurts, and you have to try not to like overreact, and like the pain.
Yeah.
My youngest, he head butted me, like, I was tickling him, like, before I got forward, like, tears are coming out of my eyes, like, cause you can't, and I'm just like trying not to like flip out, so, it's the pain just like radiates through my head, I was like, oh my god, it's so bad.
Is your youngest one like a lot like smarter than their own, but like, my mind picks on it, every, everything that, that like is bad, she just picks up on it, so like if I, like, there was one time I was really, really tired, she just yanked my hair, and I just swore a lot. And so she picked up on all of it, and she's like, and so, so now my daughter, my daughter's favorite word is damn it, and it's like proper context and everything, and she says it at like strategic moments, like.
It's hilarious.
Like, we're in the movie theater, and she drops. She's been asked, the F word's kind of on it, depends on how much you say it, but. Yes.
That's right, that's right. I'm impressed Lisa Township's trying to do this. I, I know it's better, I didn't understand, I didn't understand why it wasn't.
Like, he's got the pop, and he like looks, he's, yes, and he like, I was like.
It's like, no, 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 no. I don't think he's your youngest, I've seen like four, five, six. Yeah, so. Does, oldest tests, she's got ADHD, she tests high, it's really weird, because my daughter's school, like, she's like, she definitely has ADHD. She's, she likes, she seems like a lot of friends, she's like, she was like that, and so I've been kind of like waiting, cause there was a time when she went through like real rough patches, and she's like, I haven't through it, but. They, they do, they do, they say it's like a tenant, cause I noticed that in my daughter's school, like. Like, my, my daughter would be like, Mrs., cause she was worried about her new third grade teacher, and she was like, Mrs., um, Mrs. Hunter. Who just yells with voice.
Yeah, then you'll understand, like. Kind of the other parents, like, telling her she needs her and stuff, and I'm like, oh man.
Tell me later I'll cross the bed.
Goalie is a hard position.
Yeah, it's boring, can't like, you know, they don't come down, they're so.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's, it's either boring or it's not.
Right.
And it's not, you're like, you're.
You on, yeah.
Maybe the pads are heavy too, like, they don't tell you how heavy all those pads are. And then, you know, you gotta get angles, you gotta be able to shift side to side.
Quick.
We don't let it quit.
Put your pads down, you gotta have awareness and puck them super fast. So it's, it's a harder thing.
When you bring a bunch of people, a bunch of people, are you trying to? Oh, fuck, he scored again.
They can be surprised how fast they can move, so, like, when you're on, when you're on the ice plan, like, they're moving real fast.
There you go.
Properly.
He's been playing for five minutes. Four minutes, actually, four minutes.
It's okay.
Up, there they go.
Is she better now?
But we'll see, I mean, she's had some.
Give her time, yeah.
They're rich, so they have, like, they have it set up in their basement, with, like, the sport court flooring.
Yeah, so she probably gets a lot of at-home practice, and then they put like camps and all that.
No, she's just better, I mean, it's not even that, like, she's an, oh, but she's on that game, she's just good.
So they the same age?
Mm-hmm, no, she's a year older, everyone's a year older than her, than her. The grass will allow for the slower changes if he's like.
Sure, they can't really hunt the boards either, you know?
No.
Like, there's nothing fast.
They have, like, each teacher is jumping around the door.
You can wear your t-shirts, be small, or, if you can't have anything from the.
No, so, I mean, you gotta find a good coach that, you know, cares about the kids, and, I mean, these coaches do. But, like, it's not even like he's a little bit worse, he's, you know, like, he's.
As long as they're gonna have the ice time.
Yeah.
As long as he gets ice time. His ice time is good, he's a nice, he's gonna get better. He has a, it's just. That is, yeah.
Well, they do that, yeah.
Your kid's on the league, the UK, however badly, lots of money for your kid to be on that team, my kid, Nate Plan, or doing anything at all.
So they played in Harvard, a week school, and they had to always, I mean, it's a goalie at home. That's here, it gets over there.
But then, you know, finish out the season, we're finding a new team, kind of, yeah.
I think his play better when she's in that team, I don't know.
The people in New York do.
Said it was a word in the. Kind of a sort of. You know, I, and did I want that too, he's just so, he tells a joke, and I want that too, and he's doing it, and that's anybody in the world can.
And this is what you're, this is what I was talking, I don't know what you're reading, but this is from the Buffalo News, August twenty-three. And it tells it, and there, to the peo-, you know, in newspaper that, uh, they're going to move it to Belleville, they said Belleville, Michigan. I know it's a lot better, uh, on the news, than they were saying man here, they will believe it, I saw one news guy that said Belleville. So just pointing out they will believe Belleville, one of these, it's like, come on.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's gonna go back down to New York where it came from, that makes sense. Well, the river flows in Erie, Erie falls, flows into the river, the river goes right past Lewisville. And into Lake Ontario.
And where does everybody go to eat? That the people that live in the Lewis area talk about all the cancer.
And I'm saying it's all gonna be safe when it's here.
Yeah, did, did you see what I talked about?
There's, there's a great track record around the world, this isn't.
Yeah.
But, the, the real thing is, is that the waste of that. It's a drop in the ocean compared to what's in that place in my house.
Yeah.
Cause I was a champion in four. That was many, many moons ago. When they hit all the scores.
That's him. Her pads are like super bright white.
Second one.
Well.
Down.
Look how much prints out yourself, China, sea, Taiwan, Philippines, and Europe, and the Middle East.
I don't envy the rest because they also watch.
So what's, what's your sons, what's the record, what's their record, they love one in?
Yeah, we actually won one with them in head. You know, it's preseason, so they don't really.
Oh, well, I grew up in my family that I left, left them there now, they're out in Salt Harbor. But I think about, oh my, for rich state, at the time it was rich state.
I said.
I would in a portrait, or. My sister, well, you're familiar with New York, my sister was with my niece.
Yeah, I see.
They've also played on Bell Tired Girls.
There were no roads to the state.
The past like thirty days. That's the only time I'm not mad at them.
You go there for beef on what, real, real pizza, real chicken wings. Can't get that. Can't get beef on what, like they make.
It's the role, that sounds a little harsh. It's a kimberly roll, and that's what makes the beef.
Like the German, old German shit.
It's nothing but roast beef.
That's right, like keeping them in.
Mm-hmm.
It's the kimberly.
We forgot to skip sides.
It looks like all the kids are not inside.
I wouldn't go there if I had my family.
Your bench is on the outside of where you're at, so it's harder to.
I guess ranch broiler. It'll be ranch, we're going to the ball, you order blue cheese.
They don't make a chance playing in lower sheets in Ann Arbor, do they?
No, there's one in, um, that copyright. Actually, the person I've seen one has. They do a lot. Three teams on there, and they're all.
So they have different size ranks for like, uh, like North American hockey and for Olympic hockey, and the Olympic hockey ranks are like a lot bigger than that.
Those are really.
Years ago, he had, I was looking at him, he had a ball.
Ranks, because we're all.
Mm.
Yeah, well.
Care to be in a little better shape?
I used to play with this one guy away, and he was a little guy, he always.
I, I think so, I can't, I know he.
I was on far side. But I can't skate.
You got rid of it.
Not getting excited was, he just said.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
That's promising. No, you gotta be supportive, and you get home, you say, congratulations, honey. No.
I'm not, I can't get excited until I see it.
No, no, but then you gotta go overboard then.
We just busted. We just busted.
Do they have a certain amount of girls having to be on the team and all of that? Maybe wore out after this, they get home, all they wanna do is take a shower, eat, and go to bed.
You see it on recourse every day, recourse, crosses, felt, where it goes to.
And what raises.
Where it's in each other.
Have you seen the videos? We have YouTube, our pilot semi, this snitch. He can't. Hospital, but you're, think about that.
Og, ice, what, bringing wax, oh.
He were huge.
The waiting is also quiet.
Yeah.
So. Sort of anywhere.
Um.
Well, so, right, you should, you should.
Well, I think we want that one. Take them off of the cut.
There you go, there you go, there you go, oh, oh, oh.
So when the, when the puck, like say the puck's coming around this side, this defenseman, if they can try to keep it in zone, this defenseman's supposed to step up, and this defenseman's supposed to step back.
Yeah.
And then the opposite. Then the center is supposed to be the extra person to cover. But it depends on how they teach the center how to play though.
The, the centers are always back and forth like crazy, and they're always the better shooters.
Just enter.
Centers are kind of supposed to cover, you know, but, but some of them, some of the coaches will tell the centers to chase the puck whole game.
Moving up, moving up different score.
That's the, that's the system, though, you gotta raise the money, or. Well, get any more, you crowdsource that shit a lot, too. Well, I work, that's probably a terrible, but every time that I probably got, got raised.
Every year they take, every year.
Two meters?
Every year they take, or so, the, technically, changes. But what else is that value? So now every year, then we can share, they just exact minutes of the night. They just go, whatever the maximum, it's, it's ten percent of the week, they just go. Maximum value, that's the number.
That's one of their best.
They just, they just increase it exactly by the maximum value.
Which is about forty.
You have to pay taxes, you know.
How you, how you make fifty percent of the whole mortgage, you go for the special stuff.
So whether they're doing that, so. Proportions have, I mean, proportion have, for this, two thousand, I have more of a service, and more of a less tax, than ever seen. You have, I can't, I can't escape this, there's nothing more.
I don't appreciate it.
And there's lots more people, there's nothing but, lots more people, lots of tax, whether you want to. A lot of the time, it's, you know.
I was gonna say, what did, but. Times like, however, if I do. It's out there. I have a whole, I just have it, like, this stuff is like two thousand, it's a whole.
All right, you're done. When the game's going like this, and she gets scored on a bunch, I like. She got scored on, she got scored on, cause then I just feel like, okay, it's not. Like I like, I'm like, hope, like, just win like a bunch, get in that pass route, and then, okay.
They pay for it, your taxes range fifteen hundred, you know, like, whatever. But I don't. Because if our, if our taxes come out against me, everybody in itself, right? I don't get it.
It depends on how the, so, how the, 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 after the, probably gets. You have a private, you know, things in the.
Well, that's what they, they're actually, they're, 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 because I don't know if you're connected to. However, what they say for, forget it.
For American, okay. It's something terrible, but. They are, yeah, they're. Probably they don't update the score a lot, um, because it's once, only time, it must have been or very, really ambitious. You guys are watching the video. Never.
It's crazy.
Watch the highlights.
Even the constant yelling at each other, we stress. It's that, it's here, but like.
Oh, you know, other, other, some of those, some of those, and that, and that, and there, there. It's a good, it's a good, it's a, probably, it's a, I told you. So there and there, and the original builder and developer, why it's come up, it's just a question. So. So now, they fixed, they want to. I've got a very hard, you know, like, yeah, which I think, that's, and we hear, that's, we should, we should.
I don't like foreign, cause a tree father, when a, I tried to pull them home off of our road, same thing in dirt road, the ditch board.
The last time they did it was, it was, it was. And that was Friday.
Rightly, how? It's, 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 it's. Because of the fundamental, it's sort of recent, it's, 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 it's. Well, and here's the question, is that this company, is the.
This event is out of. But actually, it's an, they have these, but actually, it's an approved.
More like, does, does not.
Do you guys have a plant that, you know, really built Detroit?
No, you don't.
I heard it's nice, I've never been out there.
I've never been to one, right now, do they have a team?
Yeah, well, they used to. The Buffalo, the strip gang was, the Buffalo gang, the part, the, 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 old group. And he was there, the son of the. He's got it here, he's here. And we're media action on this side, so. Got a couple big ice rink, Trenton has three sheets of ice on it.
Taylor's really nice, I was like, Taylor's really nice, right, I liked that one.
Taylor's a pretty good ice rink, they used to have water, but they, they shut down, it's on like, uh, Melvin Davis had an ice rink.
So the Houston, or so the Trent one, he did his.
Trenton's pretty, has a nice rink, um, if, uh. They have three sheets of ice, Brownstown used to have two sheets of ice, but they, I know Brownstown, yeah, it was two sheets of ice, but they closed. South Gator's too.
It's after. And then like Troy is nice, they have like, they're like connected to that Buffalo, or, the Buffalo.
Arlington Hills has a nice ice rink.
And one's smelly, but, yeah. But my drink, it's so grung, like, so grungy, and so cold.
For Dark City. How are you?
Well, thanks for watching hockey, you guys.
Good job.
I will, I get home. I wanna make sure I'm at the right seat. Okay, thank you.
Brides.
That's our job.
Guess who coming, guess who coming to dinner?
Otherwise, we could fight for a whole bunch of things.
Okay, so, talk me through this, so what do I have to do, do I have to, uh.
Reconvene.
Reconvene, do I have to do a vote to reconvene?
Somebody gonna make a motion.
Can I get a motion to reconvene?
I make a motion to reconvene.
Court, okay, all in favor, aye, we're reconvened.
Who, who's part of that, aye?
Uh, yeah. Okay, so, next item is, um. We're gonna go ranging in new business, we're walking on a resolution. We're walking on a resolution. Uh, as chair, I am allowed to make, uh, motions, and I'm making the motion right now for resolution twenty twenty four fourteen. Whereas Wayne Disposal Incorporated located at four nine three five zero, North Interstate Service Drive in Van Buren Township is a commercial hazardous waste landfill facility owned by Republic Services. And whereas W H D I is designated to receive six thousand cubic yards of soil and concrete and four thousand gallons of groundwater contaminated with low level radioactive waste for remediation from the Niagara Falls storage site in Lewiston, New York. And whereas the hazardous waste landfill is located by numerous residential subdivisions and is in close proximity to a school and Van Buren's community center. And whereas the township has in prior communications indicated to the owners and operators of W D I its strong opposition to the acceptance of radioactive materials. And whereas the Van Buren Township Board of Trustees is primarily responsible for promoting the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. And whereas the township continues to oppose the treatment, storage, and disposal of radioactive waste materials at the W D I facility. Be it resolved on this tenth day of September twenty twenty four, the Van Buren Township Board of Trustee, Trustees approves authorization to enter into intergovernmental litigation against Republic Services. With a coalition of local communities seeking injunctive relief from the acceptance of radioactive waste materials. Further resolved, that co, uh, copies of this resolution will be distributed to the Michigan legislatures, the governor, uh, Governor Gretchen Whitmer. And we will be seeking an immediate injunction by the State of Michigan for the acceptance of radioactive waste materials into the state. Until the conclusion of the legal process against Republic Services, and the township supports a permanent remedy from the State of Michigan and its agency for, for, agencies for receiving radioactive waste materials. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got Sherry Fraser's second. Okay, so, uh, the resolution is, is before us, uh, anybody wants to talk on it, I, um, I can say that we are not alone on this, we have a core group of people who will be, uh, paying for it. Which includes Canton, who is, uh, which as, we are assuming includes, they're all in boards right now. Canton, of course, the tri-community of Sumter, Belleville, and Van Buren, Romulus, and Ipsy Township, they have all pledged, uh, monetary support to any lawsuits. I'm a hundred percent for this, I like this landfill, they do a good job at what they do, but not radiation, not radioactive waste. I don't want radioactive waste in my community, I don't understand it, and I don't want it. If anybody else want to speak on this. Okay, we have a motion by the Chair Kevin McNamara, supported by Trustee Sherry Fraser, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, aye, oppose, motion passes. Was there no, was there anybody that voted yes? Okay, okay, all right, so, um. So I, I guess we're into public comment now, right? Help me.
Yeah.
Okay, so is anybody from the public wishes to speak? Come on up. No, there was not.
No. He was asking about, do we need a roll call?
Did you wanna do a recall? It says a rec.
He was asking, did we need to do a roll call?
Go over here, and, um, I think I recall you, but I don't quite remember the name, go ahead.
Bradby, uh, local resident.
Yes.
Um. I applaud the resolution, well done, thank you very much, team, um. Radioactive waste, we have, I, I recognize that, uh, um, this site does a good job of, of, of containing hazardous waste. However, we have a lot of waste separate to radioactive waste, which is, we don't know about it because it's on a classified list. And if I'm honest, is probably far more threatening than what we're talking about with this radioactive waste. So, do we have a commitment from, uh, the team here that we're gonna look at these other chemicals? And follow up as part of that review that we're talking about with this, uh, nuclear stuff?
No, you don't, we, we, we actually looked, we actually reviewed the permits as they come up, and the only permit that we really had, uh, last one was in twenty ten and eleven. We do exercise our voice to try and stop them, uh, the only one that we really. Lost was this radioactive waste in twenty seventeen, so no, we're, 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 right now, we're gonna just concentrate on radioactive waste at this point in time.
Future commitment?
Not even, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, like I said, they, they've done a good job, they've got a good safety record, but this is, this is a completely different animal to us, radioactive waste.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, second question, is that okay?
Sure.
Right, um, lot of discussion about state fees for the, uh, acceptance of.
Of what?
State fees.
State fees, yes, of course.
So the discussion, I think thirty six cents per ton was the, was the amount.
No, currently, the state of Michigan gets ten dollars, ten dollars a ton of, of, on hazardous waste.
That's how much they charge?
Correct, and tomorrow Reggie Miller's got a, uh, bill, one of two bills that she's, uh, putting out there, I'll be there for the, um, for the, when they put the bills in tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
Yeah.
Those bills, one bill will seek to make radioactive waste illegal, uh, for dumping in the state of Michigan, but there's a lot of radioactive waste already here, we got smoke detectors, we got, you know, hospitals, stuff like that. So the other one seeks to put a two hundred dollar per ton surcharge, uh, uh, and form some fund for some place in government, I don't know where it's gonna go.
Yeah.
But, uh, if, if it's got a two hundred dollar surcharge, it's probab, people will probably drive right by this landfill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For radioactive.
So, so my question on this is, that's, that's a great start, and we, you know, we applauded, uh, uh, Reggie Miller's efforts on this, um, but every time I go to a hotel, I have to pay a state tax, a local tax, every time I go to an airport, state tax, local tax. Pretty much anything I do, there's a local tax imposed on top of the state tax. Using that infrastructure and waste is a commodity, right, can we impose a local or county based tax on top of that state?
In twenty, in twenty ten, the supervisor at that time negotiated a two dollar and sixteen cents per ton, um, local, uh, tipping fee on this waste, which is insanely small. But, uh, that's what we, yeah, so there's.
So we can do that, and we could raise it theoretically.
Uh, we can't raise anything, it's gotta be done as a mutual negotiation, and I don't think they wanna reopen that.
All right, thank you for your time.
We got a really good deal there. Okay, anybody else wanting to speak? Thank you. Need your name, Chris?
I'm Chris Donnelly, I'm a, uh, resident of Van Buren Township, I'm also on the, uh, Belleville Downtown Development Authority, is the marketing chairperson, and just wanted to thank you guys for the courage today, um, and thanks for the attorney's hard work, and for you following the lead, um, this is a step in the right direction. So, as citizens, we always hold you accountable when there's things we do not agree with, so we wanted to just thank you, uh, for taking this positive step, this is, uh, this is great, and we'll be, uh, we'll be sharing with all who will listen, uh, that we're proud of you in this moment, so, thank you very much.
Thanks. Now, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Hearing none, does anybody on the board wish to make a comment?
I think we commented enough.
Okay, all right, uh, then we're at adjournment, can I have a motion? So moved. Justin, Justin, supported by Kelly, uh, in favor, aye, we're opposed, we're adjourned. All right.